Good evening and welcome to the September 6th Coeur d'Alene City Council meeting. I'll call this meeting to order. And we're kind of echoing, Jeff. All council are present, one by phone and the rest in the room. We have an invocation tonight by Pastor Mark McWherter from the Church of the Nazarene. Pastor McWherter is not here. Okay, so we'll move on to the pledge, which is going to be led by Kiki tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, Sister.
Do we have any amendments to the agenda?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to make a motion for an amendment to the agenda on a couple of items. I would like to reorganize. I want to move the firefighters' local agreement to down below Section J1 to come after our public hearing on the budget. And then I'd also like to move the last item on the agenda. Find it. It was with the CBDG funds. I'd like to move those up on the agenda, that that comes before the public hearing. Does that make sense?
You lost me on the CDVG. Where do you want to put that?
Actually, I think it would be, actually, let me rephrase that. It would be most appropriate to have that come right after the discussion of the firefighter's contract, after the budget hearing, so we can leave it where it is. Sorry. All of that to leave it where it is.
But what was the part you are changing?
I'm asking to move the firefighter local agreement to down below after the budget hearing. Currently, they are higher up on the agenda.
So you're going to put I-1 after J-1?
Correct.
Well, I would second.
Actually, we don't need a motion for that. We can just, I can just do that. So I'll move that. I-1 will go after J-1.
Thank you.
We're going to move the firefighter's agreement till after the public hearing on the budget. Anything else? Okay, we have a couple of, we have a couple of proclamations tonight. The first one has to do with behavioral health and National Recovery Month. Whereas behavioral health is an essential part of one's overall health, and wellness and treatment of mental and substance abuse disorders is effective and recovery is possible. And whereas recovery is a process that people recover in our local area and around the nation, and overcoming mental and substance use disorders disorders is essential to achieving a healthy lifestyle, whereas we must encourage relatives and friends of people with substance use orders to implement preventive measures. And whereas to help more people achieve and sustain recovery, the city of Coeur d'Alene invites all residents to participate in and support National Recovery Month. So now therefore, I, James Hammond, Mayor of the city of Coeur d'Alene, do hereby proclaim September 2022 as National Recovery Month in Coeur d'Alene. Recovery is everyone, every person, every family, every community. And I want to present this to Derek Rice, who are presenting those helping people with recovery. Derek, I want to present this to you. This, mental health is always said to put down under the glove, hidden, fortunately in our case, people are lucky to know this is just like people with cancer or some other diseases. Mental health isn't something that we desire to have. It's something that happens to be both in the lead, the off, which you've got the same issue with in the other disease. And I'm happy to present that to you with your approval. And if you wish to say a few words, I would welcome that. Thank you, Derek.
Yeah, my name's Derek. As an individual who's struggled with addiction and battled that in his past, and a member of this community since I was 11, it's very surreal to be standing here right now, you know? Seven years ago, I don't think I could have fathomed having one of the things that I have today, let alone being a father, a husband, a business owner, and a productive member of society, and especially not standing in front of the city council right now. So I want to thank you guys for taking the time to read this proclamation and, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Derek. The first proclamation dealt with recovery from substance abuse, basically. And the second one is to deal with suicide. And again, this is just as important. And Idaho ranks fairly high among the nation in suicides, so it's an important issue for us to recognize. Whereas suicide is one of the most disruptive and tragic events a family and community can experience. There are over 45,000 reported suicide deaths per year in this nation, and 30 reported suicide deaths in Cootney County last year. And whereas suicide is the 12th leading cause of deaths in the United States and the ninth leading cause of death among people in Idaho in 2020. And whereas Idaho consistently ranks in the top 10 states with the highest suicide rates, and Cootney County's suicide rate is almost twice the national average, representing not only a waste of human life, but untold suffering for families, friends, and those who die in a tragic way. And whereas for every completed suicide, there are 25 attempts, or 1.2 million annually. Whereas the Suicide Action Network of North Idaho, Span of North Idaho, is a collaboration of Idahoans from five northern counties committed to working together to eliminate the stigma of suicide, educate the community, and the warning signs of suicide, and ultimately reduce the suicide rate in our state. And whereas the Suicide Prevention Action Network of North Idaho is hosting the 12th Annual Break the Silence 5K Walk on September 10th in Coeur d'Alene to raise awareness of suicide, suicide prevention, and most of all, to remember those laws to the tragedy of suicide. Now therefore, I, James Hammond, Mayor of the city of Coeur d'Alene, do hereby proclaim the day of September 10th of 2022 to be Suicide Prevention Awareness Day. And Don Duffy, the director of Panhandle Health District, is here to receive this. I recognize that these statistics, at least for me, are quite sobering and quite concerning, and it is something that we, as a state and as a community, need to take seriously. And so I present this to you in recognition of all the efforts that Panhandle Health District makes in working with others to prevent suicide. Thank you, Don.
Well, Mayor, you identified all the statistics I was going to share, so I appreciate your awareness of this serious public health crisis. And on behalf of Panhandle Health District, may I express my sincere appreciation for you, Mayor, and council members for recognizing the tragedy which is suicide. It is not the answer. And this is one step closer to removing the stigma for people who have suicide ideation, suicidal ideation, to get help, to talk to someone, a trusted friend, a healthcare provider, a parent, a teacher, to work these individuals through this difficult process and thoughts of suicide. So I wish again to thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Don. Are there announcements from the city council? I see none. We have some appointments. All these appointments were advertised, and no one else responded to fulfill these appointments. So I'm asking for confirmation of Tom Messina to Parking Commission, Woody McEvers and Bruce Hathaway to the Coeur d'Alene TV Committee, and Mike McDowell to the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Mr. Mayor, so moved.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor respond with aye.
Aye.
All opposed with nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Move on to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for approval of consent calendar as presented Resolution 22039.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Seeing no discussion, will the clerk take their roll, please?
Wood?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Aye.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Wanted to make it seem it was normal.
Motion carries. Thank you. We are now in that portion of the agenda that is public comment, and the first person asking to speak is Justin O'Connell. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. I just wanted to discuss the Suicide Awareness Day that was accepted by the Health Department today. That's great for optics. I just want to make sure that we are dedicated to implementing the suicide-inducing measures that we attempted to at least implement in 2020. In July 2020, central health here strongly endorsed community-wide masking, social, physical distancing, and still at our schools, I believe, we're asking our students to stay three feet apart. This is great. We want them to stay actually 18 feet apart, but we're well on our way there. We had to kind of retreat a little bit on the physical distancing measures. Now, in 2020, the data is astounding what we got back pretty early on. Now, there's this thing called cascading effects when you make certain decisions. They have a bunch of different effects on things that maybe you didn't anticipate. And suicide attempts was one of these things. And you could see, looking at the data, according to CDC, suicide attempts among adolescent girls surged by more than 50% during pandemic. The suicide attempts increased among adolescents aged 12 to 17, especially young girls, during COVID-19 pandemic, according to CDC data. That study likely under-represents the real number of suspected suicide attempts because Americans were hesitant to go to hospitals during the pandemic. And this is great because we scared them a lot. And even today, I heard a story about a little child who tested positive for COVID-19, and he thought he was going to die. And this was exactly part of our intention by implementing all of these measures during the COVID-19 pandemic, which the Health Department here also pushed. Child psychiatrists warned that the pandemic may be driving up kids' suicide risks by February 2021. One school district in Las Vegas experienced 19 students who died by suicide. Doctors were warning all across the country that this was happening. A group of doctors urged a return to normalcy for children who would return to in-person learnings. They say the pandemic up people had led to increased suicides and overdoses among young people, and they had urged for a return to normalcy. So, you know, I just want to note that it's great for us to come here and say that we, you know, are taking suicide seriously, but I want to make sure that in the event that we need to implement public health measures that increase suicide risk, that we're prepared and ready to do it, and in solidarity with our partners. Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Hammond and council members. My name is Greta Gissel, and I have just had the phenomenal opportunity to become the new executive director for CDA 2030. And in your mailboxes, I have one of these folders with one of our new implementation plans and a letter that I'll briefly go over. Our board members are listed in there, 2021, our, pardon me for just a moment, our annual report, and then the news release about them hiring me. So I'm very pleased and honored to be here. First of all, I want to thank you for your ongoing partnership of CDA 2030. We are moving right along, and I'm really excited to be at the helm right now. We believe that CDA 2030 is a viable, influential, and necessary part of this community's framework. We exist to help strengthen and connect community organizations, government, and citizens. We facilitate partnerships with agencies and organizations to avoid duplication of effort, and a forum for engaging in broad community involvement, which has identified priorities and action items included on our respective implementation plans. Our presence and encouragement support the acute community in achieving goals and identifying ever-changing needs. Now that the envision process is complete and our organizations have updated plans to guide us, we look forward to being a community connector to help implement these actions. We've included, as I said, the implementation plan for your review. It's an exciting time for CDA 2030. We have been discussing all of the ways that we can move our communities forward in a positive fashion. One of the most exciting things is we are currently discussing a merger with the Regional Growth and Regional Housing and Growth Issues Partnership, RHGIP. And we plan to incorporate many of these functions under the organization of CDA 2030 moving forward pending board approval. So, but there's a lot of heads nodding, so we're really excited. I invited a whole bunch of community members to a meeting to discuss the merger and what they thought about it, people that have been involved in RHGIP for the last year and a half. So we're really excited. And I just want to close by saying that as the convening authority, we believe that we have profound value in our service to our community through furthering the 19 goals, 46 objectives, and 134 actions set forth by our citizens. As we move forward, we will be rebranding, and that's very exciting, with Luke Malik helping us with our strategic planning moving forward. So I want to thank you all for all that you do to serve our city, and we look forward to working together with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right on time. Chris and Diane, if you could come forward, and I'm not reading your last name because I'm afraid I'm going to butcher it. So if you'll share that with us, please. Good evening.
Hi, my name is Chris Hallamichael. And we was, this is my wife Diane. We was informed recently about the Cootney Health Crisis at the hospital and with the Board of Trustees. It's in the Idaho Tribune about the financial crisis that's coming, about the hospital financial troubles that they're inquiring right now. And we just wondered if the board was familiar with it, and what their response was to it. It says the hospital's governed by elected Board of Trustees, is publicly funded entity, that the hospital has the ability to collect taxes from citizens of the county, and also fund its services in exchange for taxing the authority of people in Cootney County are supposed to have a say in the public enactment of the board. The Board of Trustees is, according to this, has not been forthwith to the public of what's going on at the hospital, their financial issues. Are you aware of it, or?
I'm aware of those allegations. The follow-up that I have done is that those allegations from that news source are not correct. But I'm not going to try to speak for the hospital board and their actions. We have no control over them, and they're a separate body, actually taking on a broader area than just the city. So I'm sorry, I can't respond better if any of the council wish to.
Can I ask, was that young lady that was speaking, was she speaking about the Agenda 2030? That's what she was putting forward?
Well, this is just an opportunity for you to express your opinions.
Right. I was just curious.
We really don't go back and forth, so.
No, no, I was just wondering, because that was one of the things we wanted to ask you about, is if you were aware of the Agenda 2030 vision for this county.
No, I'm not.
You weren't, well?
So we need to go to the?
I've not read that article. I've just been told about things in it, so.
So we need to go see the Board of Trustees?
We know, we need to know who or what, this is kind of our first endeavor with tackling something like this.
Go to the Cootney Health website and click their board link, and their meeting is available on Zoom, so you can watch it.
Okay.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
And that website will also show you all the board members and the director of the hospital, so you can communicate with them.
And they, who, so?
They direct the hospital and the budget and all the actions of Cootney Health.
Okay, okay. Well, why is the 2030 plan brought before you folks?
Well, there is a group that works with the city called Coeur d'Alene 2030, and they work with us on things such as planning and the comprehensive plan and efforts of that sort. And they're, if you read the plan, you'll see that there are a lot of good efforts planning forward for the next five to 10 years to improve this community.
Okay, well, and so we can find out online where to get the plan?
Well, actually, if you talk to Greta, I'm sure she can connect you with the plan.
Okay, thank you for your time. We don't mean to go over on our time.
Okay, we'll then move on to the item I-2. And this is the resolution from a previous council meeting regarding an annexation. And so the action before the council is to approve this resolution?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to approve Resolution 22041, Annexation Agreement with 15th Street Investments LLC for the annexation of plus or minus 1, 61-acre parcels located at 3525 North 15th Street, zoning from County Ag Suburban to R12 City Zoning District.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you. So I remember when this came forward to us, and I did support it at the time. I do, however, want to let people know that, reading it again, it's, I'm getting a little bit suspicious of the five-foot setback thing, which I'm okay with it now, but going forward, I've been looking at a lot of these developments in town where there's these five-foot setbacks, and the houses are just too close together. I know that's a fire hazard. You know, the fire would prefer the houses be farther apart so they don't all burn down. But a bigger issue that I noticed, especially when I was driving by this development where they have the five-foot setbacks, is you can't plant trees if all you have is five feet. And we are Tree City USA, so I just, I'm going to say, this is okay for me now, but moving forward, I'm going to be looking at that a lot more energetically.
Thank you. Will clerk take the roll, please?
Miller?
Aye.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yep.
English?
Yes.
Wood?
Aye.
Evans?
Aye.
Following that is the actual ordinance.
Oh, move to adopt Council Bill 221010.
Second.
Motion is?
Mr. Mayor, let's start by dispensing the rule.
That's why I was, I think we're out of order.
Did I miss it? Sorry.
We, oh, there we go.
I'll make the motion to dispense with the rule and read Council Bill Number 221010 once by title only.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yeah.
English?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Aye.
Now I'd like to move to adopt Council Bill 221010.
She has to read the title. She has to read the title.
Oh, she does.
Unless you want to dispense, can we dispense with reading the title?
What do you?
No, we can't.
That's what happens when we put our agenda out.
Okay, I'm losing control here.
Too much coffee.
Would the clerk please read the title?
Certainly. Council Bill 22-1010. An ordinance annexing to and declaring to be a part of the city of Coeur d'Alene, Cootney County, Idaho specifically described portions of Section 1 Township 50 North, Range 4 West, Boise Meridian, zoning such specifically described property hereby annexed, repealing all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing a severability clause, and providing for publication of a summary of this ordinance and an effective date hereof.
So we need a motion to adopt that. Please.
I move to adopt Council Bill 221010.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion, yes?
I have a question on this. On the resolution, is this it? There was some funky language in here, and I don't know if, if I can find it, I'll bring it up. If I can't find it really fast, we'll just pass it by. But it was a sentence that read really odd. Yeah, it's on the ordinance. In Section 3, "The Planning Director B and he is hereby instructed to make such a change." So it looks like there's something missing in there.
Actually, I think there's an extra word. The "he" should be gone.
That the Planning Director B and "is hereby instructed," that's the right it is? So the word "he" needs to go from there?
Yes.
Is that, do we need to make that an official change, since that's part of the ordinance?
Yes, go ahead and make that change.
Okay, so I'll modify the motion to fix Section 3 in the ordinance so that the word "he" is stricken from Section 3.
Is that okay with the movement of the subject?
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you.
Good catch.
Okay, will the clerk take the roll?
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yep.
English?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have a resolution, would be an approval of an amendment to the agreement with CDA AIDE and CDVG CV funding. Chelsea Nesbit, Chelsea.
Okay, so we have just a CDVG CV funding update and then a recommendation for funding request. Our decision point tonight is should city council authorize approval of an addendum to CDAID's CDVG CV contract? Currently, we have $5,326.65 in our city's utility subsistence fund, and that fund is being underutilized. We've only spent about half of what we allocated for that fund, and that goes to help with water bills and sewer bills in the city. We just aren't getting applications for that, so we would like to reallocate the money so it can be used better. And then we still have $3,048.51 in the CV projects funds that's unallocated, so it's just kind of sitting there. And CDAID has previously spent down all of their allocated funds that they received through the CDVG CV fund, and we have a bill for $3,470.99 that they've submitted that if this agreement is, or this is approved, that we could fund that. And they definitely have the need and the capacity to spend down the remaining funds if we approve this request. So we are recommending that we reallocate the $5,326.65 in the city utility the $5,326.65 in the city utility subsistence fund and also allocate the remaining $3,048.51 available to CDAID to increase their funding by $8,375. So that would close out the utility fund and spend down the remaining CV funds that we have available. And our decision point is City Council should approve the addendum to CDAID's CDBG CV contract to increase their funding by $8,375 and close out the city's utility subsistence program.
Can you take that to the next slide so people can see what we're talking about when we talk about projects?
Which, oh, the, the last one here?
Yeah.
So this is the list of all of our CV funding projects that we've done. So you can kind of see there, we allocated that $10,000 for the city utility program, and we still have this $5,000 remaining and then the $3,000. So total funds available is $8,375.16 with that fund.
Questions for Chelsea? Woody?
Chelsea, so can that money be carried forward as it stands right now?
As far as like holding it for something future?
Next year?
We can, we have a limited time to spend the funds. I think we have six years total from 2020, so, but it is meant to respond to coronavirus and the pandemic. So, and we're kind of at the end of it where we just, and CDAID, definitely, they're helping people with rental subsistence, utility, transportation to get to work. So they're, they definitely have the capacity and the need to spend it.
How much did we give them on this budget?
Total, they have gotten $85,000.
And that's, and that's used for supporting people who?
It's hospitality workers who need help with rent. If they're out of work, they don't have benefits normally, so they're kind of out of, money out of work if they, if they miss work due to sickness or just having to be isolated.
So everything that's given here has to be justified?
It does, yeah. They have a application process and they verify the relationship to COVID-19 specifically.
Okay, thank you.
Dan?
Well, I would just say that the point of the assistance is to get it out there and help people. And it sounds like if, if the process we've had hasn't really gotten it out there and, and they are doing that, that, I mean, they've got the whole network, so at least for now, what's before us right here. I think this makes, makes sense. And then, you know, we've always got some carryover with that and then we can, you know, take a look at, at things. But again, they're getting, appear to be getting it out to the folks who need it, so I think that's a good way to go.
And we haven't had any other requests for funding recently for, for those funds? So, and it's, it's, it's just a small amount to continue that program that's already in place and working.
It's not a large amount for a capital thing, but given that, I would make a motion to approve Resolution 22 dash 042, approving an amendment to the agreement with CDAID for CDBG CV funded.
Second.
Could you say that faster?
Three times.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Further is there discussion on the motion? Saying none, will the clerk take the roll, please?
Gookin?
Yeah.
English?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Aye.
McEvers?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chelsea. We now have a public hearing and our comptroller is out ill, so Troy will be doing this show all by himself. If you wish to testify at this public hearing, there is a sheet over on the table for you to testify or sign up to testify. And so there's more time left while Troy makes his presentation before we actually open the public hearing. So Troy, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council members. I will do my best and we wish Vani success in getting better. We are here tonight in a public hearing to discuss the October one, 2022 new budget. We are proposing that it be $123,852,624. This is a very solid year for the city of Coeur d'Alene. We have a urban renewal district that's closing called the Lake District. It is going to generate in our anticipation of $930,787. Couple of years ago, we had forecasted that this would be $2 million in new revenue to the city of Coeur d'Alene. During that period of time, our city has grown at 76% rate, so our valuations have jumped way up. In fact, the levy rate last year was $3.48.
Our value has grown, the city hasn't grown.
Our value has grown.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just want to clarify that.
So the levy rate is your cost per $1,000 of assessed valuation was $3.48. It's going to move down to $2.07 year over year. So when that is applied to the valuation of new growth, our income from new growth this year, and you have looked at this a number of times, is $268,000. That's less than we've seen in the last seven years. So we are seeking your input and have proposed to you to take the 3% increase that you're allowed to do. That still does not bring us back to the dollar amount that we would have had, had the district closed and the levy rate not dropped this much. It actually returns money to the taxpayers, especially since we can only take 80% of that valuation. We had a very good year and renewal on our health insurance. I would suggest it was phenomenal. It's up year over year, just $160,000. So we have some new positions in the preliminary plan, and you have been a party to this for a number of months. On this slide, and Vani needs all the credit for this and she put this together, we are looking at a pie chart of what our revenues are compared to last year. This is a solid year, again, because of federal dollars coming to the city in the form of a grant. State revenues, as you've read, are solid as well. So when we look at this, you see that property taxes come in at 41% of the total. I'm going to show you in a slide or two that that is skewed because we have so many dollars coming in from the federal side. State revenues are very much helping this budget, 21% of our total in this plan. So again, giving you the macro look at this, when we take away from the overview, the federal funding, also known as ARPA, it gives a better direction on what the property tax portion of our budget equates to. We tend to hover a little bit, less than 50% of your general fund comes from property taxes. This comes in at 47%. 21% in the previous slide from state revenues, when we strip away those dollars to give you a real look at the general fund, it increases to 24%. So our purpose here is to show you your two major funding income streams for the city of Coeur d'Alene and the importance that they have in your budget. We take it and go across all of the city in this slide. We look at what we do a great deal of, and that's our people. So in this one, you get to see how important it is for us to have property taxes coming in at, across the citywide at 22%, charges for services at 26%. And in this situation, the fund balance is helping this plan because we're using fund balance and federal dollars to fund all of your capital. It's not funding any ongoing operations. We are in the business of public safety. This shows all the departments that you govern and quickly shows the two public safety departments standing out. Police making up 39% of our expenses in the general and the fire department making up 24%. If we dissect that one more, it looks like this when we strip away the capital. The good news is, is we found a way with your assistance to provide capital without it coming out of cash flow so that we can continue to fund the personnel and that side of the People are the expensive part of our business. You're in the service industry. Services and supplies are up this year, mainly because services and supplies are up everywhere. 72% of your general fund is made up of people and the associated expenses. This isn't too far out of the normal, other than the good news that your capital, which is 11% of the total, is being funded with money that you have in reserve. So when we look at a breakout and we lower capital, personnel expenses jump up. And you've known this ever since you've been elected. We are all about people. They are the reason that we can provide the services that we do. And with public safety, when we strip away the capital, it shows up there. So when we look at the three-year comparison, the blue being 2023, the one we're looking at, the orange color being 2022, and again in 2021, we just wanted to share with you how these expenses are moving. Services and supplies, the second column there has increased. There are some dollars in there that are helping with that, especially when it comes to software and those things in the IT world. Capital outlay, the furthest column to the right, that speaks to the dedicated or the dollars that you would be approving for capital with your one-time money and the grant funding from the feds. I would look at your general fund expenses and personnel moving in the direction of a city that is growing and, of course, what we've put in there for the cost of living increase. So again, just taking the expenses, showing you the general fund and all of the enterprise funds that you have, what they are up to when we scale that out. The good news there is wastewater and water are always doing projects, but currently they've slowed down a little bit. So again, you've looked at the detail. It's online for our residents to look at. Water has a few major projects that you've been approving and taking a look So when we take a look at the increases in the budgeted expenses, it shows up very quickly in personnel. I take you to the public safety in the middle of the slide, police and fire with the personnel that they have. Streets and Engineering has proposed some new full-time equivalents in there. And general government is transfers, so that is money moving from the dedicated dollars to go buy things. Municipal Services is up year over year, mainly due to IT purchases that you've looked at, and those would be one-time dollars that you have allocated. I would suggest that Streets and Engineering also has a $750,000 increase as per your guidance in overlay. That makes a spike very quick in that department. Police would have a spike there because of the building. So graphically, just showing you a different way to look at all the numbers that exist in your preliminary financial report. Citywide, this is a look in how that stacks up. Obviously, with those types of increases in the general fund for capital, it's up immensely. Water Department has the projects we talked about. Wastewater's underwater here, only because last year they had more projects than they proposed in the upcoming budget. And everybody else is pretty close to where it has been year over year over year.
Did you really mean to say wastewater's underwater?
I apologize, Mayor, yes, that would have been a bad finance joke. I will ask for forgiveness on that one. Those enterprise funds are major contributors to the success of your city because we are able to charge for the overhead and that helps dramatically with the cash flow. So again, I'm here to assist with any questions you might have. You've taken a look at this a number of times. Thanks for all the time you've put into it. And share with you that the picture is solid in this financial plan, and we have allocated all of the dollars that are in this particular annual appropriation of $123,852,624. I would stand for any questions you may have.
Kristi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Troy, it occurs to me that we need to separate out all that capital that we've talked about, and I'm curious if we can do that. If we, we pass a total budget, we also have to eliminate the capital so that it doesn't roll over into next year. I don't see a proposal for that, but do you have the actual dollar amount of what the budget would be without the capital?
Okay, so we include the capital in the financial plan, right? And so you're saying, what is it without the capital?
Yeah, and I guess, before you answer that, I'm just going to give you an example and maybe you can understand where I'm going with this. Just if you have your booklet in front of you, page 47, let's just take the building inspection department. I'll give you a second to grab that. Maybe there's a simple explanation. You can help me with it. Down at the bottom, you, you will see, I'll let you get to 47.
Page 47.
You'll see the, there was a vehicle grant for $62,000. So that's rolled into the total budget.
Correct.
How do we make sure next year that that, that budget for the building inspection department is lowered by $62,000? Seems to me that we need to separate those out.
Okay, so it is, because it's a capital line item. Then we have the five-year capital replacement program that's in your budget as well. And of course, in the process, we look to make sure that we're not duplicating that. So basically, we're seeking council's authority to have a spending authority of $62,000, which is federal grant dollars to buy that vehicle.
Mm-hmm.
And then next year, they will either ask for another vehicle or they won't. And we would be able to see that carry forward because we have the three-year of what's been approved to look at it and make sure that it's not being done again.
So, so I think what I'm gathering from you is next year, this will carry over, it won't carry over?
No, we go back to zero at the beginning and have all the capital broken out. So in this, page 47, you will see that in 2019, they bought a vehicle. 2020, they bought one. Nothing going forward till this has been requested.
Okay, so next year, when it comes back before us, that $62,000 won't be there?
As long as they don't want a vehicle, correct.
Right.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. Does that help?
Yeah, and I would imagine throughout this budget, I mean, I'm not going to sit here and go line, line by line, but there's a lot of that, where next year, we would want to see that those capital purchases are not included in the overall bottom line for each department.
That's the way we, and again, we define capital has to last three years, be over $10,000 so that we can inventory it.
I'm wondering if we wouldn't be better served at this point to open the public hearing, get that testimony, and then come back and, because they may bring up more questions as well, and we can bring Troy back up here and ask the rest of the questions.
Certainly.
Dan?
Mr. Mayor, I was just going to comment on what Kristi said, because it's a concern of mine as well. I remember years ago, we had something in the engineering department budget for the remediation of Rosenberg. And I'm like, well, is that money going to be there next year or is it absorbed? And of course, it's always absorbed. But I do want to point out, in the planning department's budget, on page 26, you can see that they had the funding for, from 2030 for doing the, the comp plan, and then it did disappear. So that budget's total went down. The money wasn't kept in there. One, a pet peeve of mine is the. peeve of mine is the drainage fund, which I don't, yeah, it's on page ninety-seven, which had an initial amount of cash in it to accomplish something and has kept it in there year after year. It's listed as depreciation expense down there. If you're going to look at the, if you're going to drill down, four-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars just kind of sits in there. That is an example of my concern, which is the money that just kind of stays in these things and lingers. But I agree with the mayor. We should hear from the public.
So I could answer that last one if that was a question.
Just comment.
Okay.
You'll get another shot, Troy.
All right.
Okay, we have two people signed up to testify before the public hearing. The first one is Justin O'Connell.
I've been waiting for this for a while. This is a big night. We're talking about the budget. Mr. Mayor, council members, the moment we've all been waiting for, the budget. Yes, we can do this, and we will. You're actually, we're actually not too bad off here. Have you seen these other cities? They're like basically totally in the red. What they did was they shut down all the businesses, and they didn't get sales tax. And then they thought the ARPA funds were going to cover everything, but the ARPA funds didn't cover everything because of the cost of living increase. And now they're basically not sure what to do to cover the expenses they already have. They have this massive drug outbreak. They are a little bit behind on getting in front of that. Fentanyl deaths in the streets, homeless people everywhere, and just increased expenses. So we're not doing so bad here. You know, the other cities are kind of like crackheads. They're like begging the feds for more and more money. They can't keep up with the destitution. But here, we're early in the process, you see. So we do have some big expenses, like the library, for instance, which, spoil alert, in the future, it becomes a homeless shelter. Thomas Jefferson once experimented with a private membership-based library, probably like the YMCA, showers, books, that sort of thing. One-point-eight million goes into the library this year. It's effectively a government monopoly, yet the local thrift stores are dominating the market. They have everything you could possibly want. Civil disobedience by having Henry David Thoreau for a dollar, nineteen-eighty-four for fifty cents, Brave New World for fifty cents, Animal Farm, all pennies on the dollars. They have all the classics. You just got to kind of shop around town. But the library is really not about being competitive on book market. It's more about monopoly and then curating knowledge. But that's kind of longer-term plan with that. So two million dollars well-spent, half a million dollars for the Public Objects Commission, also known as the Arts Commission. Everyone loves the objects. You've heard all about it. Have you seen the privately donated art around town? The Heckla Mining Miner, the Idaho Wildlife Museum Cowboy, it's beautiful. It really truly is. But the Objects Fund is really all about kind of yuppie to yuppie welfare. I'm not even objective here. You actually rejected my Power Fist. So I mean, I have every reason to kind of criticize that, but I'm still all for it. Have I mentioned that I love that in the state, we have a monopoly on liquor too, and we get a cut of that? The thing I want to know is to increase the revenue on that. Can we start promoting it with billboards, et cetera? Maybe we can do a partnership with the college. We did this in Big Tobacco in colleges. We basically pushed chew on the baseball players. Tony Nguyen, good story about that. Maybe we can do that here on the liquor front. Big Tobacco, I have them on speed dial if you need to hear from them. I don't see enough police equipment in the budget. Plus, we're selling police equipment, so that seems a little bit too physically responsible. President Dark Brandon already gave the speech, you know, the speech where it's like, this group is bad, and we've got to get rid of them speech, and then it goes from that group to other groups. We've seen this before. So we need more city police equipment. The sheriffs already kind of showed he's got a kind of, he's got cold feet about this whole thing. So we need tanks, cruise missiles, F-15s for the police department. Speaking of which, have we budgeted for the database that was requested also, demanded last time around? I actually do tech, and I can either implement an old-fashioned database or the brain chip. I have different packages on that. Another thing I noticed is that the general government category, it accounts for less than ten percent of the city fund, and this should be one-hundred percent of the city funds. The general government, it should just be all the money, so it's a little bit more opaque, and people can't come up here and kind of pick it apart. This timer right here, it's an unnecessary government expense. It makes public comment easier, so you kind of know where you are, and you can keep track with your notes. So I would recommend just getting rid of that to save some money. And then also limiting the time of public comment to save on the lights here. I have all sorts of ideas on this front, but I guess we'll just have to wait till next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Susie Snedeker? Welcome, Susie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is too noisy. Jeff will let me know, I'm sure. Mr. Mayor and Council, that's the annual preliminary budget hearing. As a citizen of this city, I expect not only transparency, but, oh, I'm sorry, Susan Snedeker, City of Coeur d'Alene. As a citizen of this city, I expect not only transparency, but also your critical review of each and every financial transaction. I said this to you in twenty-nineteen, and it remains true today. Narratives. The narratives first appeared in the twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty budget. Frankly, I find no reason for them. With the exception of a paragraph or two touting what happened or what is to be, they are exactly the same as in prior years. And I know you all caught that. I will accept the legal narrative, which I found very different from prior years. And I want to know, for whom are these narratives written? The downtown association, year after year. Again, the taxpayers will give the downtown association fifty-two thousand dollars. As you are all aware, the downtown association entered into a binding agreement with the city to maintain the capital improvements, streetlights, signals, bricks, et cetera. This included painting. Year after year after year, the taxpayers pay the association to adhere to their agreement. Not only are the painted surfaces peeling, fading, and rusting, but some were simply painted over to a height of six feet, and they're substantially taller than six feet. Rusted metal must be returned to untreated status prior to painting. You can't just paint over rust. The light globes have not been washed since the installation of the LED lights years ago. The bricks are hazardous, to say the least. Having seen people in the past trip, I wonder if there have been any lawsuits against the city for not maintaining that. Face it, your downtown is simply unkempt and is badly in need of maintenance. Deferred maintenance, as you know, is very costly. There is always an excuse, but I remind you and the downtown that they signed the agreement. I continue to expect the downtown association to adhere to the agreement. It's time for the city to enforce it before giving more tax dollars. Please remember, this is a taxpayer's downtown only. Oh, downtown also, sorry. Impact fees. God, it's so repetitive. On November fifth, twenty-nineteen, I told the council that I had just discovered that the city had not increased impact fees for fourteen years. For some reason, I expected a strong response, but a bit of indifference was what I remember. I see that updating impact fees, as mentioned in planning this year, in the budget, to be completed in twenty-twenty-three, but no specifics offered. It is important to note that this fee could have been increased annually by a percentage, but was not increased here. The city has been in a commercial building boom at a tremendous rate, and no outrage regarding, no outrage regarding fees that the taxpayers that aren't coming into the city. It appears the council has not demanded the cost benefit to developers for unknown reasons. I want to know the amounts year by year that the taxpayers subsidize the developers by not increasing these fees. This year alone, it should be substantial. Twenty-thirty. As also noted, it's an amount budgeted for twenty-thirty, the amount of thirty-five thousand dollars. This was to be a group to assist in planning in the comp plan. The comp plan was written and approved. Is the function of this non-elected nonprofit group completed, and if not, when? And are they telling the city what to do? Or are the elected officials determining what happens with the city? Arts Commission. Again, it's time to return to the original intent of adding a maintenance account, which was created solely for art maintenance, not as a money pot for parties, et cetera. It should be temporarily put on hold. Is there, is no reason for additional funding at this time, and the accrual will be substantial due to the capital investment in the city in the upcoming year. The commission, the commission might consider a sculpture garden outside of the downtown with rotating sculptures. It would be a destination and have an educational component rather than placing art here, there, here, there, and here and there. Thanks, Jeff. Here, there, and mostly downtown, where too many become invisible. It might be time for them to consider, for the commission to consider hiring a consultant from out of the area who specializes in public art, in art that's, in outdoor, outdoor art. They have the funds to do that. There's no reason why they don't. The commission is considering planning a gateway arch for the east entry of Sherman. However, I see nothing budgeted, so I gather that will be budgeted in twenty-three, the twenty-three, twenty-four. I would remind the council that some years ago, the city purchased a beautiful, large sculpture by Theresa McHugh for the gateway entrance on East Sherman. The cost was, I believe, substantial. Perhaps the placement of the art piece should be altered to make it more prominent to people entering Sherman. It's kind of, it's difficult to see. And that is the gateway, that was to be the gateway greeting for the east side of town. Edinger Person Field. While it is good that the restrooms were finally replaced, the field master plan adopted years ago has yet to be completed. With a very large residential development north of Hastings Avenue in the works, Edinger Person Field will become a very much needed facility. I mean, I think those, my understanding is, I haven't looked at the map, sorry. My understanding is it's high density, and that's, I'll spare that comment for another day. Knowing, knowing the proposed development, that proposed PUD on the former Forest Steel property is intense. Not a tree left, just flattened. And I have a feeling it's going to be very high density. I could be wrong. It's just a guess. But I, my understanding is there's no open, there is no park included in this very large, very large development. And if there is, if there is still, person is going to be, person is going to be, have an impact, there will be an impact on person, and it really needs help. The trees that were planted, I understand, are broke, have been broken, and we won't go there at this time either. But I think it's something you need to consider. We're doing things for other parks, but nothing for person, year after year. You did the bathrooms, I think it's nice. Garbage fees. As an aside, the garbage collection fee jumping from three million, seven-hundred thousand to four million, six-hundred-and-ninety thousand seems a little more than odd. Any comments?
We'll let you finish, and then Troy gets to come back up.
I understand how that works. Donation of funds. Again, I ask that prior to giving any funds to a nonprofit or to a not-for-profit venture, that you require the chair of the board to address the council at a council meeting. So the public has some idea exactly who is receiving their money and who is spending their money, and who is responsible for the taxpayer dollars that they are, that they are gifted with. Employees are unacceptable, no matter what their title. It should be the chair. It is a responsibility of those requesting accepting funds to do. They wanted the job as a chair of those committees, commissions, or those nonprofits. That's part of their responsibility. They need to come and talk to the taxpayers, in my opinion. Telephone decorum, not a budget, but an item. For many years, city telephone has been answered by one person. Marilyn did it for years. Jane did it for years, with occasional backups. City, Coeur d'Alene is now a city of international reputation with a city of excellence motto. My recent experience recalls were inexcusable. Please do something to improve this necessary service, which in some cases, the first impression of residents and visitors alike. In closing, my experience is commenting at preliminary budgets. September hearings are actually an exercise in futility. Yet I continue to take the time to study the document, page by page, line by line, as I believe it is my responsibility as a citizen. Funds are there and are spent, or they are not spent. And in the city, money flows here and there, and is somewhere, or it isn't. After all these years, I would note that rarely does anyone attend these meetings and comment. The council responses or lack thereof are no surprise to me. No doubt, they are all too aware that it is a lesson in futility. Thank you.
Thank you. Susie, would you mind leaving those comments with the clerk? I'd like to review them.
I'll send you some.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now close the public hearing and ask our city administrator to take the podium again. And Dan, did you have, okay, Dan, you go.
Well, I had a question on property taxes, and I know we get a substantial amount. We've had, you know, coverage lately about the, you know, what's going on with the county treasurer and, you know, looking at, you know, maybe taking a different approach with hanging on to our, you know, the delinquent taxes and penalties. And I realize we're, you know, we're working on that separately, but I just wanted to have a sense, out of that, if you know, out of that property tax budget, what portion of that is typically prior years' delinquent taxes and fees, just so we have an idea proportioned?
So we anticipated that if the delinquent taxes did not get the interest added to them as proposed by the Cootney County Treasurer, we would be down about seventy thousand dollars in revenue that we anticipate. What we do for the budget is we budget exactly what you have asked for. Obviously, we do not collect a hundred percent of that because that would be perfect. But we always have income from past due property taxes that have classically made up that difference so that we are equal to or may slightly exceed that revenue line item. But I don't think as a steward of the tax dollars, we should put in more money for that line item than what you've asked for.
Well, and I appreciate that we're working on that, but I mean, that is a substantial, out of all the different things we do, seventy thousand dollars can make quite a difference at different occasions. So I appreciate the effort on that. Thanks.
Yes, staff is working on it, and your very competent city attorney is doing a great job. I could answer a few questions since our constituent that, ever since I've been with the city, has been to this meeting. This constituent has gone through the financial plan, as she always does, and she is correct on the sanitation fund. I would propose to you that your finance director missed that line item under the expenses in the enterprise fund. So an enterprise fund keeps its money. It's not in the general fund, excuse me. And on page ninety-four, I also had a call from a council member that worked through this diligently and asked this question. So under the sanitation budget, which is an enterprise fund, it's a fee for service. Since we started the contract, we have never raised the rate for our constituents on this enterprise fund. It's still cash flows. If I take you to the garbage collection line, if you happen to have it in front of you on page ninety-four, the expense for the upcoming year will be less than the four million, six-hundred-and-ninety- six hundred and ninety thousand dollars. That was an error in a arithmetic function that we had in there. So we could modify that, but that will not change what we are doing tonight, because it's an expense, and it's an enterprise fund, and there's no property taxes that go into that. So that would be like Troy making a mistake on any other expense, which I have made in here guaranteed, this will not be perfect, is it, it is an estimate, and thus, that money will stay in that line item, in that fund, and we will pay the expenses as we have always done. So I would suggest to you that if we were updating this particular plan, we would have a greater positive at the end of that year. So that is one thousand percent correct, and my apology on behalf of this hundred and twenty nineteen-page document that we had that error. The Downtown Association, we do have a contract with them, we're continuing to update that. We have done a light pole from the base all the way to the top in partnership with the Downtown Association. It sits at the corner of Second and Sherman on the northwest corner. That was scrubbed ground and painted back green, and we are testing to make sure that the paint holds. It is the paint sample from the new lights that are going up. We are putting slowly, over time, in conjunction with the partnership and our streets department, new lights downtown, they're LED, and they're actually glass globes, it's not the plastic. Impact fees. The planning department met today, in fact, and looked at the consultants that have supplied information to do the impact fee study. I would suggest to you that we should have that done next middle of late spring, pushing to get that done, so we will be coming forward with a proposed contract on that subject. Arts Commission does have a maintenance portion to that. The money is in there. You've looked at that budget. We did look at that amazing art piece on East Sherman. We were working with the Catholic Diocese on their cemetery there. If you haven't noticed, they put up a beautiful fence along Sherman. That has been a good partnership, as old streets that used to bisect that property have been vacated due to the state not needing that land anymore. So that cemetery has actually grown in the last year, and the Theresa McHugh amazing art piece is so heavy, and the way it was assembled, we're not really able to move that. We've asked the artist, and she asked her fabricator, and what you will see is the fence will line up with where the corner post is. There's temporary fencing in there today, and they will finish that off, and that art piece will remain. So our parks director has been feverishly working on that. Our constituent that has been here for twenty-plus years spoke about the narratives. I can ask our awesome department heads to do a better job, but kudos to Randy Adams for doing a good job on his as a new legal professional. So I may not have captured all of those good points, I just respect the effort put forward in this budget and what this city does by Susie.
Okay. Woody, you had a question?
Yeah. So Troy, as we go forward, as it sits today, what's, what's fund balance looking like?
The fund balance is looking healthy. We are probably going to be at seventeen percent of your general fund, which is in the ten million dollar neighborhood.
Thank you.
Another question, yes, Christie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Troy, what are the AIC projections for this year? I think they do at least two or three years out, but what are those projections? And they're probably not reflected in here anyway, but.
Yes, they're all in your financial plan for the revenues. We use AIC's projections off liquor tax, gas tax, sales tax.
Can you just kind of go through those? It's so hard to read these little tiny.
Yes, we can get the whole financial plan on eight and a half by eleven, but if you go to the page of revenue for general fund, page five, when we look at state liquor tax, we are proposing a million, four hundred and seventy-one thousand. This year, we are at a million, three hundred and fifty-six thousand. If I drop down another line, highway user tax, again, that tax is based on the cost of fuel. So again, the state had about two point five million. We are proposing that in your new budget, it's up over three million dollars. So the increase in revenues has been very solid, as proposed in this financial plan for those items. You see a slight increase dropping down in EMS. That has been more classic to a small increase, and as you've discussed, you're looking to get a new ambulance into your city, starting in January of twenty twenty-three, that we hope to staff with our people with your permission.
So, I'm sorry, Troy, so you're saying the numbers that you've plugged in are what you took from AIC?
That is what I'm saying, yes, thank you. We, we rely on them and their contact with these state agencies as they look at the revenues and what's been going on.
Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Troy, are these numbers in this plan, are these the latest numbers from the state?
They're the latest forecast that we had received.
So, so between the time you printed this, which was over a month ago, there's been no updates from the state regarding increase in sales tax or liquor tax?
No. It is a moving target, you're absolutely correct. It's the future year of sales tax.
On the bottom of that page, there's a, a line item for interest earnings. Didn't they change the funds rate?
Yes, it is moving in a favorable direction.
So it's not going to be forty-five thousand dollars? It's probably going to be more like it has been in prior years, where it's six digits?
I don't think it'll be that aggressive, but yes, it'll move up. We hope it moves up.
There's more money coming in.
That's right, because we will miss other line items in that revenue statement.
Regarding the narratives, how did that germinate? I'd remember, I don't remember anyone up here asking for narratives, so why are we giving people in the city busy work that, who is it for?
Could have been a prior administrator brought that forward, or the effort to go into the comprehensive annual financial reports as you get certified through the government accounting. They enjoy narratives, because not everybody likes numbers.
Well, I, for years, we didn't have it.
Correct.
And I'm glad Susie read it, because I don't, because it doesn't really do anything for me. I'm looking at the numbers. And I just, I'm just curious, you know, as to, and Susie pointed out, that it's, a lot of it is copy paste. I, I would just say, since there was no policy set by this body regarding narratives, that I would suggest that we don't have them anymore. That's my thought.
Not a very good one.
Well, I like it.
I'm sorry, Dan.
The, let's see, what else did we get into? Yeah, Susie talked about twenty thirty, and I, I, I'd always take it a step further. I don't like the government funding any nonprofits. I just think nonprofits should do their thing, and we should do our thing, and it seems to me, it always taints a nonprofit anytime we give them public money. I have a lot of stuff in here that I think could be cut. I'm not going to make a motion regarding it, just because I don't, you know, I get a second, but then I'd be wasting all of our time, because I think there is a lot of stuff in here that, that is wants, not needs. I think it's a, a bad idea to be raising property taxes three percent when we're on the cusp of a, a recession, when Europe's basically falling apart financially right now, and, I mean, there's a lot of stuff going on, and my concern is, I don't want to be imposing upon taxpayers who are already being pinched by food and energy costs, and put us in a situation where, especially with the new employees we're getting, that we'd have to lay them off, because things are going to get bad. That is, is a big concern, but overall, I think there's plenty of money in the budget. So I do appreciate Susie's comments. I am, and I know this isn't us, this is the way the state set things up, but it, it seems, it, it truly is an exercise in futility, that we have the hearing for our budget at the last possible moment. The train is not in the station, the train has left the sta, it's at the next station, and this is when we allow the public to make their comments, which is like futile. And I just, I, that's the state, though, the state sets that up. I wish we had more opportunity to provide feedback from the public, because it's really important. And those are just my random thoughts.
Just a moment. If the council chooses to raise the bud, take the three percent, that does not necessarily raise property taxes three percent. Those are two different things. If you raise your budget, you're not necessarily raising property taxes three percent. That all depends upon the greater value, there, that, there's a difference there.
For an individual, yes, but if we, if you look at the, the revenue page again, going back to good old page five, you know, nine, twenty nineteen, property taxes were twenty million dollars, twenty twenty, twenty-one million dollars, twenty twenty-two, twenty-two million dollars, this year, twenty-four million dollars. It's kind of hard to say they aren't going up.
No, that, I didn't say that, but I did say that you, there's not a direct correlation between raising the budget three percent and property taxes going up three percent. That, that doesn't correlate.
It's complicated math. I know a lot of people got hit with, with tremendous assessment increases, and I actually think that, that's the highest your house is ever going to be, trust me. Because it's, it's gonna, it's gonna crash, it's already crashing. But it just, it, you know, a lot of people, unless, unless you're doing the math, unless you go into the weeds like I do, and you take the average valuation of the taxing district, and you look at your increase and its increase, and then you work out the percentages, it's a lot of math, and you can figure out if you're going to go up or down or stay the same. It's just, I don't think it's necessary. In fact, I, I would al, almost offer a conspiracy theory to say that the, the levy rate was purposefully changed or adjusted here, just so we could get more urban renewal money. So just a conspiracy theory.
Christie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually am not prepared to make a motion on the budget right at this moment, because we know that we're still in negotiations with both police and fire. I understand fire has a proposal that's in our packet, but we haven't had an opportunity for Troy to discuss that with the council, and that is done in executive session. So I'm going to make a motion to table the vote on the budget, and then recess to executive session, so we can be brought up to speed on negotiations. I, I don't see how we can possibly pass a budget without having that critical information. So that's my motion. To table.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second discussion on the motion.
A question on that. If we do that, is there an opportunity to, I still had questions on a few other line items, so we can still address those at the same time?
Absolutely.
Other questions on the motion? Yes, Woody?
Well, it's not on the motion, I was just going to mention something, Dan, that we've talked before, and I look at the value of what I pay in my taxes on my home, whatever that total is, just for the city, and I take it down to how much a day? Well, mine last year was dollar forty-seven a day, and I got police, fire, parks. They plowed my snow, they picked up the leaves. So when I look at our city taxes, it is what, twenty, what'd you say, forty percent? Forty percent of it that produces and holds this thing together, I, I think it's quite a value, since you can't even buy a cup of coffee for a buck forty-seven. And again, that might change a little, but if you really break down what you pay per day and what you get, it, it helps me make a decision whether it's, I'm asking for a little bit more, and we don't very often. We've been very conservative for my twenty years, and your eight years or nine years here. We've always been conservative. We were, I was just brought up that way here, Dixie Reed, Deanna Goodlander, I can go on and on, and the history here was always, the last thing you want to do, be economical, be cheap, squeeze it, work it, and I've always been proud of that. I've always felt that that's what our mission is, is to try and give our folks the most for the least, and I always think we're doing that, and it's catching up. I look back to those conservative days, Christie, when you were beating the street. It was a different time, it was a different approach, and what I'm learning now, watching Troy do this presentation, is it's changing again. And like you said, Dan, it used to be this way, or it used to be that way, and it changes, and it's hard for us old guys to try and wrap my head around some of the words they use and the language. The narrative is a good example for me. It helps me, reminds me of what these guys do, because I can't always hang out with the parks guys, or be hanging out with the building inspectors, and what do they do, and what are their goals? And that's where the narrative sort of helps me get an idea of what that department does, and what they are hoping to do or have accomplished. And I think that's part of, my job is to tell those stories to my constituents. People ask me questions all the time about things they don't know, and maybe it's something I know. I know the sewer guys, I knew the street guys, I like the blue collar stuff. I relate to physically doing things that people see and, and understand. Smooth streets, snow has moved, you know, when people tell you, boy, they did a great job on the streets this year on snow removal, can it get any better than that? So again, this, I'm sorry, I kind of got off track, but I just, I try and look for the good in things, you know, that's just who I am, and I, that's why I appreciate this job, and being able to represent people and try and understand this money thing. It's just, it's overwhelming, you know, I get in the weeds real fast when you're down there counting nickels and dimes, and I appreciate all you guys do to get into this thing, because it's a monster, and there's always compromises, and we try and support everybody, but mostly it's the citizens who have to put the value on it, what they pay for what they get. Thank you. I feel much better now.
Just, just one more thing. Troy, I just wanted to bring, I had a bunch of questions here, but there was two that we've already talked about, and I wanted to clear those up if I could real quickly. One is on the, the garbage collection thing, and thank you, I, I had brought that up, but one thing that I think might be important to note is that, that, that was a mistake, and we know that that line item's there, and it's not going to increase a million dollars over the course of the year, but can you speak to the actual sidebars in that contract that would assure that that doesn't happen, since it's already a line item in here? And I think we talked about a percentage of increase by contract that was allowed.
That hasn't, the contract with Coeur d'Alene Garbage has a maximum per year based on labor cost and fuel costs. It hit the maximum this July, so that's built in, and of course, every one of those invoices are looked at and approved, and you get to see copies of them as well. So that is a budgetary line item error, and it will be less than that, both per contract and per overview.
And part of that contract is also looking at that recycling payment based on the national prices and, and the other things that were the language in there. Okay. Wanted to touch base on that, and the other quick thing is, I know under, we're talking about these capital projects, and they are listed as grants, and under the police department for the building, I had thought that the ARPA funding was four point five million dollars to that, and the grant amount in the police department outlay is three million.
Great catch, and in so doing, we don't anticipate, we can get it built next year, so we're not budgeting all four point five million dollars in next year's budget, because we will not have it done by one year from now. So there's a million five that can be used to finish up that project as per your wishes. So we do our best to budget it as it's going to be used, but it.
Okay.
So if it got done.
Where's the million five in the budget?
Next year's. Three million this year in this financial plan, million five.
It's not in the budget?
No. Three million dollars is in this budget for the building.
But one point five is no, what, which is sitting in the bank? I mean, shouldn't we, accounting-wise? But one point five is no, what, which is sitting in the bank? I mean, shouldn't we, accounting wise, list it somewhere as an asset?
It's in our balance sheet, yep.
It's on a balance sheet, but it's not in the budget?
No, because you, we're not appropriating it for this next fiscal year.
Okay.
Thank you.
So a quick follow-up, just in rough numbers, we're proposing twenty-seven million dollars in property taxes. That covers your wages and benefits for police and fire. I could go into a little bit more detail, but just to give you the macro look at it. And the dollars that will be coming from our constituents will go down thanks to the closing of an urban renewal district, even asking for the three percent increase in revenue to the city, it's not a three percent increase as the mayor referenced. So there is a big change, it's the first time the city of Coeur d'Alene has ever closed an urban renewal district. So that money will go back to the taxpayers, and our legislators made that so.
I have a motion on the table still?
Yes.
Thank you.
We do have a motion on the floor, and Christie, what I'd like to do before we adjourn to executive session relative to your motion, is take care of the CDBG on the agenda first, and then we'll adjourn to executive session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, that is if the council approves your motion.
Yeah.
Would you please repeat your motion for the sake of the council?
Yes, I would like to table the, the vote on the budget, go into executive session so that we can hear from administration the police and fire contract negotiations that will directly unpack this budget.
You have heard the motion and second. All those in favor respond with aye.
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 Opposed with nay. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, if I may add, I, I would also request the police chief and fire chief join us in executive session.
Okay.
Thank you.
Chelsea? Welcome back.
Thank you. All right, so we are here for the public hearing on our 2021 CAPER, which is a consolidated annual performance evaluation report. So we tell you kind of how we spent our money and what we did during the year. And our plan year changed this year, so our ending date was June thirtieth, instead of normally it's April. Or, I'm sorry, March thirty, thirty-first. So, CDBG is a grant from HUD, and it supports low to moderate income residents through specific activities. It usually supports housing, but can include public facility improvements and public service projects. Our city first became eligible to receive funds in two thousand seven. And this is a breakdown of our past four years, kind of so you can see, public services and public facilities are kind of even there with twenty-eight percent. Our admin and planning is at fourteen percent, we're capped at twenty percent of our allocation for admin. So normally, we kick back the extra admin funds into one of our other grants. And then housing at eighteen percent, and a little bit of economic development. So LMI means low to moderate income, and that is a HUD designation of our households whose earnings are based on thirty, fifty, and eighty percent of our yearly median income. And for Coeur d'Alene, in two thousand twenty-one, it was sixty-five thousand five hundred. So based on a four-person household, low income was, was at fifty-three thousand fifty dollars. And when we select activities each year, they have to meet a national objective and be a HUD-approved activity. They have to meet our annual action plan goals and our consolidated plan goals. And we consider our staffing capacity, the size of our allocation, and the capacity of our sub recipients to carry out the activities when we, when we select activities to award. So our five-year plan goals, we have six of them, the first two are to increase the supply of affordable for sale and for rent housing, to increase the city sidewalk fund, to make them more accessible for people with disabilities, neighborhood revitalization, expanding higher employment opportunities through economic development, and then public service program assistance. So for 2021, our total allocation was three hundred and sixty thousand four hundred and ninety dollars. We have an annual grant to Lake City Center for their Meals on Wheels program. We have set aside five thousand dollars per year during this consolidated plan for sidewalk improvements. And then our MRAP program, the Emergency Minor Home Repair Program, we normally set aside fifty thousand dollars for that, so in 2021, that was set aside for their, that program. And then sixty percent of our allocation goes towards community opportunity grants, that includes public service as well. And then our admin fund is twenty percent cap, so last year that was seventy-two thousand ninety-eight dollars. So in 2021, the goals we met were neighborhood revitalization, sidewalk improvements, public service, for sale, affordable housing, and economic development, but we did not meet our goal for affordable for rent housing. And our grants awarded in 2021, this is the list of them, NIC for their Economic Development Scholarship Program, Idaho Youth Ranch for Facility Rehab, and St. Vincent de Paul for their restroom rehab, and TESH also for restroom rehab. And then public service activities were United Way, their childcare scholarship program, and then CDAid's subsistence program. So we awarded two hundred twenty-three thousand three hundred and ninety-two dollars in community opportunity grants in 2021. We completed two counseling positions from using 2019 funds. And then 2020 funds, we can, we completed our Lake City Center AED purchase for their facility, and then another, this was the original NIC Grant Scholarship Program from 2020, and then the annual Meals on Wheels grant. And we completed eighteen MRAP projects, which our goal is ten, so we completed eighteen, and that includes things like heating system, roof replacement and repair, ADA restroom rehabs, and electrical and plumbing issues. And we will show you some before and afters of the restrooms, so these are walk-in tubs for people with disabilities, so they can easier get into their bathtub. This was a skylight that was leaking into the house and causing mold and all kinds of damage, so they took the skylight out and patched it up, and no more leaking. And then another restroom rehab that we did, HVAC replacement, and a re-roofing project that we did. So those are just some examples. And Lake City Centers grant, we increased that from five thousand to ten thousand dollars in 2020. It normally serves sixty-seven seniors who are homebound, and they expected to double that number with the increase in funds, but our final report showed that three hundred and ten seniors were served with that money. So that was a big increase. And then our COVID funds, in 2020, we were made available four hundred and forty-six thousand seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars in COVID funds for urgent needs and to respond to coronavirus. And so in 2021, these are the projects that we completed. Lake City Center bought air scrubbers for their facility, Idaho Youth Ranch hired a case manager position. We had three emergency sheltering projects. St. Vincent de Paul got new entry doors with a buzzer and an intercom to kind of control the flow of traffic there. And then Four Roots had a pretty good food box program. And then our open projects now are the CDAid Subsistence Program, which had closed out, but now we have more funds. And then United Ways Scholarship, Childcare Scholarship Program. And then we've closed out the City Utility Assistance Program as of tonight. And then Love Inc. has another subsistence program similar to CDAid. And these are the doors at St. Vincent de Paul, so nice new entry doors. The food box program from Four Roots, they served five hundred and eighty households and two thousand thirty individuals, and they used local produce and products also in their food boxes. And this is, that list again of all the projects, COVID-funded projects, and now that remaining CD funds would be zero because it's going to CDAid now. So we have not received any public comments to date. And we would take public comment and ask for approval to submit the CAPER to HUD for official review.
Okay, thank you, Chelsea. We'll now open the public hearing, and no one has signed up to testify, so we will close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Community Development Block Grant 2021 Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report CAPER.
Second.
Heard the motion second, any, just, yes?
Just one question, and I, this may be a timing, a calendar issue, but there was a reimbursement item to Habitat for Humanity for some engineering, I think, for a, a project. Is that a calendar or fiscal year difference thing?
Yeah, that's a plan year difference, so that grant was a 2020 grant, but we don't report the accomplishments until they've completed, and we have the final numbers, so that will probably end up going on next year's report.
And does that go under your goal of the providing affordable housing? Is that where that will go?
Yes, and that's a for-sale housing. So we met the goal in 2021 using those funds, but we can't, we don't report the full project until it's complete.
Timing, okay, thank you, that's all.
Woody?
Chelsea, so a couple of things, when you, can you go back to that slide that shows the choices we make, the different sections that you try and fund? Seems like we've been doing this for a while. The original.
Oh, our five-year goals?
Your goals, yeah. So the one that seems to never get touched is the rental one. Is that just, we haven't figured out how to do that?
Yeah, we, we haven't had anyone come forward with a request for helping with the rental housing. The, the only way we have kind of addressed that is with the COVID funds, with the subsistence, because it's helping with rental assistance. So we haven't had any other requests for that kind of a project. And usually, a lot of those would end up being like someone building a, a housing development or something, and our allocation's so little, we, it would be hard to create something like that, but we are looking for, you know, organizations that want to do a subsistence program similar. But IHFA is doing one also through the state, that's a pretty good one too, so they're helping a lot with that. So yeah, it's kind of a gap there with the for-sale and the rental. It's hard to meet those with our little, small allocations.
Do you think that, that kind of helps with the CDAid, the aid thing, they help people subsidize rent? But that line item is really for a bigger picture, a part or piece?
Yeah, it can be either, so I think CDAid is probably going to come forward with a, a grant request in this next round for a bigger rental subsistence program.
So you're saying, though, it could be some, a contractor or a builder could set aside an apartment, and it helps subsidize the rent for somebody of a lower income?
Something like that, yeah, yeah. Or help, help with the planning phase of, of that.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, respond with aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed with nay?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now it'd be appropriate for the executive session motion?
Mr. Mayor, would motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code 74206J. Consider labor contract matters authorized under section 74206A, one, A and B.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Clerk, take the roll, please.
Wood?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Aye.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yeah.
English?
Yes.
Okay, we will adjourn into recess into executive session. And we'll be back.